John, I have six o'clock. Should we?
Okay, we're ready to start whenever you are.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the September 15th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconference and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N 2920. The public may only view the meeting online and not in the council chambers. Mr. Connolly, would you call the roll, please?
Chairman Rossler.
Here.
Commissioner Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Here.
All commissioners are present.
Very good. Commissioners, you've received the minutes from our August 18th meeting. If there are no changes, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Kramer?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there are no changes, I move that we accept the minutes as for the August 18th, August 18th, 2020 meeting as presented.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Aguilar seconds it. Mr. Connolly, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rossler.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer.
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Connolly, any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is time the commission sets aside for matters that are not on the agenda. Mr. Connolly, anyone wanting to speak under oral communications tonight?
So for the purpose of anyone who is on the Zoom call, they'd have to click the raise hand button at the bottom if they want to speak. I see no raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move along to our public hearings. The first public hearing is P 20-0027 Martian Ash Distribution. There's late this afternoon, staff received a five-minute video that is, how to put it this diplomatically, it's against the distribution and consumption of marijuana. I've watched the video and I'm okay with it, but it is five minutes, so it's two minutes over our three-minute limit. So if you raise your hand if you're okay with the five-minute presentation, we'll go from there. Anyone interested in seeing the video? We have one, two, three, four, five. Okay. Mr. Connolly, we'll go ahead and show the video whenever that's appropriate in the presentation. So Ms. Chow, I believe this is your staff report?
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman Rossler, Commissioners, this is Patty Chow, the Deputy Director of Community Development Department, City Planner, and we need for the PowerPoint to come up here. But basically, I'm here tonight to present to you the first public hearing item, which is a special use permit for cannabis distribution to be located at 2465 Dogwood Way, Suite 100. The planning case file number is 20-0027. Next slide, please. So basically, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for, that's to be located at 2465 Dogwood, Dogwood Way. There's an existing approximately 27,000 square foot industrial building that to be used, part of it, or Suite 100 A is about 1,800 square feet, to be used for cannabis distribution, which is a type 11 license distribution facility. There is an existing medical cannabis retail facility located within Suite 100, about 6,300 square feet, and that was permitted under Measure Z. The project proposes to re-tenant that 6,300 square feet of space with the proposed distribution use in Suite 100A while maintaining the existing retail storefront in what would be the remaining about 4,400 square feet of area in Suite 100. I just wanted to point now in this presentation for the record that I was notified that MNA Distribution, a responsible distribution company, has actually changed its corporation name to MMM Distribution, Inc., but is in fact the same entity, same structure, officers that are part of that corporation. So it's just a name change, but I did want to put that in the record. Next slide. So this project site is located at the northwest corner of La Mirada Drive and Dogwood Way. There is an access via shared driveway off of Dogwood Way, and right now currently there's parking for 54 vehicles exclusive of the docking areas. Next slide. So the general plan designation for this site is RLI, which is Research Light Industrial, identified on the left side of the screen, and then the zoning is Business Park Specific Plan. Next slide. So the city council approved the ordinance back in December of 2019, which basically established the process through a special use permit to allow for two cannabis distribution facilities and two cannabis manufacturing facilities, and also cannabis testing facilities to be permitted by right. These particular facilities are to be located within Vista Business Park Specific Plan, Area B, which again known as RLI, which is Research Light Industrial. And the particular cannabis-related uses need to be located 600 feet away from any daycare center, youth center, or school providing instruction, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12. These facilities are subject to licensing provisions that are contained in the municipal code in Chapter 5.98. The applicant for this particular request submitted the special use permit for the distribution facility back in January 30th of this year. Next slide. So this is the site plan identifying in yellow, I'll write in red, the particular area where the distribution would take place. It's about 1,800 square feet in area contained within that area that's identified or highlighted on this slide. Next slide. This shows a close-up of that distribution area, which would be the 1,844 square feet at the back of the building. The front, as mentioned before, would remain as retail in the remaining 4,400 approximately square feet of area. Next slide. So the distribution uses, they require separate licenses, not only from the city, but also from the state, following the special use permit process. The cannabis enterprise licenses from the City of Vista would require them to submit an operating plan, a security plan, a capital investment business plan, as well as indemnifying the city among other requirements listed in the municipal code. The facility also have to get permits from the State Bureau of Cannabis Control. Next slide, please. So the proposed cannabis distribution use, it is consistent with the RLI general plan designation, as well as the specific plan for Vista Business Park, all subject to the approval of the special use permit. And as mentioned before, one of the criteria is that the project location is actually an industrial park, and it's also not located within 600 feet of any daycare center, youth center, or K through 12 school age. And the appropriate security provisions are also proposed included as part of the conditions of approval, as you would find them under the shares department conditions. And also the recommended findings from staff for the special use permit are also included and addressed in Exhibit 1 to the staff report. Next slide. With that, the staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution granting the special use permit for cannabis distribution at 2465 Dogwood Way, Suite 100A. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant is also present participating in this Zoom meeting. They are here also to address any questions. They do not have a formal presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. For those members of the public that are watching the Zoom meeting, if you wish to provide testimony on this item, you need to hit the raise hand button, and when I open the public hearing, Mr. Connolly will call on you to make your presentation. Commissioners, any, let's deal with questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Kramer, any questions of applicant or our staff?
It's probably more of a clarification, but yes, I do. So as a cannabis distributor, if I'm reading all the information correctly, the only, the people that they sell to are licensed retailers, is that correct?
They, I believe that that is the case, but I would like to ask the applicant to clarify that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, city staff. That is correct. We would only be distributing to licensed retailers in the state of California at this time.
So John Q Public can't come knocking at the door and buy anything from you, is that correct?
That's correct. It's not a public-facing facility, so there will be no public access.
Okay. Next question, and I think, Mr. Andrews, this is probably for you, but this is curiosity. Why a walk-in cooler?
Well, we have products that are temperature sensitive, so some of the products that we'll be storing need to be in cool temperature.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grimm, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I had a question for, I guess it's probably better for the applicant. When you get a crate of marijuana, and maybe you could take me through what happens to it. It comes in, I assume that you maybe percentage-wise use it to make different products, and then how is that distributed? Do you already have a network, or is it just somebody calls you and you send it out? And then maybe finally what percentage of what you do is available in your store?
Yeah, so we, so as a distributor, we'll be accepting orders from licensed cultivators and manufacturers, similarly from the BCC. So we would place an order, that order would be transported to our distribution facility, at which point the order would be checked into the state's licensed track and trace system. We would store the product in a quarantine, in a DEA-secured cage until such time that a licensed retailer placed an order with our distribution company to fulfill a certain order. At that time, we would compile the order and then use one of our certified distribution vehicles to transport that specific order to the retailer. Everything from the time we get the product to the time we distribute it to the retailer is filed in the track and trace system. And at this time, we're really, to begin, we're looking to self-distribute to our own retail outlets. So we have a retail outlet here, and obviously in Vista, in the City of Vista, we have a retail outlet in San Diego, and we have a retail outlet in Imperial. And as we grow as a company, we believe that it would be helpful for us to distribute to our own stores in addition to other local retailers that may find from our business.
This is a follow-up. Do you process the, is it coming as raw? Raw is probably a bad word, but just plant it in a grill and then depresses it, or?
No, so we're, we would, we're only applying for a distribution license, which means that the product would be, would come fully packaged and sealed, ready to be distributed to the retailer.
Okay, great. That answers my question.
Okay. Commissioner Garrettson, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I would like to know what the product situation distributing to the, to the facility in Vista, that would, that would be for medical marijuana only, correct?
Correct.
And you would not be any, any other type?
That's correct. So depending on?
But you could distribute to other facilities where it's legal?
That's correct. So we would only distribute products that matched the designation for the, for the specific retailer. And I will say that the designation, when it comes down to it, the designation is purely for, from a customer standpoint and being able to access the facility. The products are the same. So the products that you'll find in our medical dispensary in Vista are the same products that you'll find at our recreational dispensary in Mission Valley.
So the facility in Vista, instead of buying it someplace else, or getting it someplace else, they'll get it from a distribution center?
It's essentially, it's essentially for us eliminating a middleman so that we don't deal with a third-party distributor, we're dealing with our own distribution company.
And tell me about the security again?
So we'll have, I believe that there is a proposed security diagram with, with security cameras. We'll have video surveillance footage rolling 24/7 and available for law enforcement for a 30-day period after it's, after it's reported, as in addition to onsite security 24/7.
So this really, no, no impact on the, the facilities that are already in Vista? It's just from where they get their product?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Looney, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Question for staff. Patty, you stated that in 2019, the council made a decision to approve two distribution centers and then two manufacturing facilities. If this is approved, does this count as the second?
That's correct. That would be the second one. The, the first one was approved back in June, which also included a manufacturing use, a facility.
So then they're applying for the last vacancy, so to speak, or a second?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, the last part got cut off.
So the applicant is basically asking for that last spot that's available for the City of Vista?
For distribution, yes.
Now, what about the outlets? Does the city have a policy limiting the number of outlets that's, you know, open for business, for distribution to the retailer?
Could you repeat the question, Commissioner Looney? That last part you said about an outlet being available, a retail facility being available for distribution?
Is, does the city have a policy limiting the number of retail outlets?
There is. According to Measure Z, there were a total of, I believe there were 11 facilities that were approved, that were actually approved for operating.
The standard in Measure Z is one per 10,000 residents, which allows 11.
Okay. Okay. I know that right now there's two on South Santa Fe. One across from, and then one, maybe 200 or 300 feet in that strip center next to the mortuary.
Yes, it's actually, they're spaced more than 600 feet apart per the ordinance, but that, that is.
Okay.
Permitted in those locations.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hastings, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I have a question for the applicant. Just following up on Garrettson's and Commissioner Grimm's questions. So in effect, you are just a middleman?
Yeah, so, so we receive products from licensed cultivators and manufacturers and then distribute it to retailers. And that's the way that, that Proposition 64 in the Bureau of Cannabis Control set up the chain of custody, so to say. So we would be acting as a distributor, receiving products, licensed products, and then distributing them to other retailers and retailers such as ourselves.
Okay, and as you confirmed before, this is without any repackaging?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Yeah, most of my questions have been asked, but it has to do, I guess going off that last question. Who does the quality control for the product? If it's already prepackaged and you're not doing anything with it other than distributing, who's in charge of the quality control?
So the licensed manufacturer or cultivator will have to test, will have to test the product before we accept it. So we would, we would require what's called a certificate of analysis stating that the product has been deemed, has been tested and deemed safe to sell to retailers, at which point we would be able to accept the product. But all the testing would be done by the cultivator or manufacturer.
Okay, and so, so I guess you're relying on some outside vendor to have the proper testing done and all that?
That's correct. And if there, if there wasn't a proper test and the certificate of analysis failed, then we would not be able to accept that, that shipment.
Okay. And then you guys touched briefly on the DEA storage, so that's something that's required by, by the state to have that DEA storage area?
So, and that is a standardized formality, so we would have, so there would be self-locking doors, self-closing doors. It would be, the cage would be made of number 10 steel fabric or greater with openings of no more than two and a half inches. It would reach the structural ceiling and be flush with the floor. So we would adhere to all those standards when we're constructing the storage area.
Okay. And my next question is for staff. This municipal code 5.98, it's, does it, does it state that you can't have two retail establishments at 600 feet? Is that correct?
It's 5.98, Commissioner Aguilar, it's talking mainly about the distribution manufacturing facilities.
Okay.
And that, that 600 separation, but it doesn't address the, the retail part.
So I guess my question, my real question is, distribution and retail can be next door to each other according to our municipal code?
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, very good. Most of the questions that I have have already been asked and answered. So Ms. Chow, with only two facilities, and this being the second one, do we know of anybody else who was trying to get in line, or this is pretty well closed the circle?
This, this was the second one, the only one that we know of that was waiting for was in line, basically after the first one that got approved in June for distribution.
All right, very good. All right, I'm now going to open the public hearing, and we'll hear from members of the public. If you hit the raise hand button, Mr. Connolly will call on you, and you have three minutes to make your presentation, except for whoever's presenting the video, they can have five minutes for the video. So, Mr. Connolly, the ball's yours.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the first speaker we have is Becky. I'm gonna unmute Becky. Becky, your time is on, you can speak.
She's muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. And we're gonna come back to Becky, if that's all right. We'll go to Kelly McCormick.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. McCormick.
I would suggest you give these decisions more time, wait and see what comes from the decisions already made. If you're interested in facts, I would highly encourage you to consider opening, opening testing facilities and ask applicant, the applicant, who is testing their product and providing this analysis. We still don't have any permitted facilities in San Diego County. Its crucial marijuana product for manufacturers is tested. Vaping cartridges, a popular product among teens, has proven very dangerous. According to the CDC, marijuana vaping cartridges tested found the vapors they produced were filled with high levels of pesticides and other harmful substances. One of the products, Maui Wowie, contained 1,500 times the legal limit of pesticides. Antonio Frazier, the Vice President of Operations at the Los Angeles Canisafe, one of the nation's leading marijuana testing firms, said, "I'd be willing to bet that some of these are over what they would consider a fatal dose." He added, "People don't die from smoking a pack of cigarettes, which is what we're seeing with some of these vape products. People are actually dying over a month of use. I ask you to send a message to the community that you are more interested in the public's health and safety. Wait and see what ramifications take place from already permitted distribution centers and pot shops. Permit a testing center before moving forward with anything else. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, we have, we'll try Becky again. Becky, can you unmute? Okay. And we have one more speaker. It's a phone number ending in 6598. 6598. Can you unmute your phone? There you go. Go ahead, speaker.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I think who you heard from, my goodness, was Becky. And you still need to hear from Kelly.
Okay.
Are you getting the phone?
We heard from Kelly McCormick, and Becky could not unmute herself.
I think it was just the reverse, just FYI. Are you getting an echo from my phone?
A little bit.
Figure out how, why that's going on. Can you give me a second, just in case I can get rid of that echo?
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the commissioners to mute their mics, that we can prevent the noise?
Oh, that's much better.
All right, go ahead.
I'm hoping I can hear.
Still breaking up.
Well, that's, yeah. Still not an improvement. This is a process for the community, isn't it, when we're held hostage by technology? You have my sympathy as well as my own situation. What I was also respectfully asking is that you postpone this decision until you have more information about the products that are going to be distributed. As was mentioned by the previous speaker, we have no testing facilities in the county. And to simply say that the products are going to be sent somewhere else and then back to them to be distributed is not an adequate protection for the public. Until there are some assurances in place that these products that are going to be distributed in your city and outside your city are safe, I think that we need to postpone and wait. Most of the research that's been done over the summer has indicated that marijuana products are generally contaminated and are dangerous, especially as vape products. Thank you.
Should we go back and try Becky one more time?
Yeah, we'll try one more time. Becky, if you can unmute, you have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Becky is, can you speak? We chose you're unmuted. I just went back to mute, so. If you'd like me to, Mr. Chairman, I can show the video.
Why don't we go ahead and do that, and see if Becky can fix her audio problem?
All right.
When I first started smoking weed, I was like, no, like, there's no way. I'm not gonna do anything else.
gonna do anything else, and then I went and did everything else. But it stopped me from, like, doing anything, and I, like, failed my freshman year because of it.
Today's marijuana, it's been genetically bred to be an entirely different drug.
The new study out this morning reveals the number of teenagers vaping marijuana rose dramatically in the past year, with the percentage among high school seniors nearly doubling.
What it should be all about is the health and safety of our kids, because they're our future. We're 43 in the nation in high school graduations, and we're number one in pop use, we're number one in vaping, we're number three in abuse of all illicit drugs, and we're number nine in suicide. We're losing them daily.
I feel like it's robbing my kids of a certain level of innocence that they deserve. They deserve to go through middle school and have their biggest concern be, you know, seeing the boy they like in the hallway, not coming up against drugs and pressure to take drugs. It is a brave new world with today's marijuana, and we're talking potency and concentrates up to 99.9% pure, and that is why when someone just says marijuana, you really need to dig down deep into understanding what they're talking about, because it could mean anything these days. I think a lot of people vote for legalization because they're concerned about social justice to an extent, and they believe that voting for legalization will help with that. Arrests of minority youth increased, according to the best available data that we have, after legalization.
And we're going to allow men that are financed by the drug industry, put together a political campaign, tell people a bunch of lies, aren't you tired of young black men, you know, getting arrested for, for marijuana? You have a chance to stop this. And certainly, people are compassionate. We don't want to be a government, you know, that incarcerates our citizens, you know, for any and every offense, and certainly, we want to look for constructive ways to reduce our incarceration rates. But lying to people, they lied to the citizens. Most citizens thought that they were doing something good by decriminalizing marijuana. No, you legalized it.
I considered myself to be, you know, fairly conservative in my thinking, never used drugs, and I thought, if you can ease someone suffering at end of life, why would we not do that? And I voted for medical marijuana. I thought, we have to do this for people. What kind of good people are we if we don't care about others, right? So I voted for it.
It's typical of the marijuana industry to use really unique cases involving children to help justify the more widespread use of marijuana.
It is absolutely criminal, in my opinion, to exploit them for a political group to get something that they want, a for-profit group to get what they want.
So medicine is not something that voters vote on. I mean, I don't know last, how we voted on cancer medicine, Zofran or Kytril. Medicines should be done through the scientific process, prescribed by real doctors and dispensed in pharmacies.
And the public is being duped into thinking this is gonna treat their arthritis, gonna treat their cancer, gonna treat their eczema, gonna treat their Huntington's Chorea, and the list goes on of all these treatments, and they're simply not founded.
It's a scam.
But that is the way that they begin to normalize marijuana, and it is the medical side that they use to help normalize it, and then the recreational side comes shortly thereafter.
And it certainly is the same playbook as the tobacco industry, if you think about it. In the mid-1800s, late 1800s, with the invention of the cigarette, there was a movement for medical tobacco. That was pushed late 1800s, and then that quickly changed to non-medical cigarette smoking, and an industry that relied on addiction for profit, on lies, on funding their own science, funding their own advocacy for, you know, a century, until we kind of woke up from that slumber in the U.S. and realized that we were being taken for a lie. The same thing's happened with marijuana today.
I had a question of Mr. Andrews, the applicant, is that right?
Yes.
Tell us about, tell us about testing of the product that, that you're going to be distributing, how's that work?
Yeah, so there's licensed testing facilities that are licensed by the Bureau of Counterweight Control in their local jurisdictions. Every single product that we take in has to have a certificate of analysis certifying that it's been tested and has passed for the various things that they test for, including heavy metals, pesticides, THC limits, et cetera. So we have a full, a fairly good assessment of, of the products before we accept them.
So are there standards that have been set for the level of other things that are in the marijuana than, other than marijuana?
Yes, there's a, there is a standardized, I don't, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but the BCC has standardized what levels determine a failed test.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, do, are, do you have any other questions of, of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Garrettson, I see your hand up.
Now, you made a comment just now that you're pretty sure these state-approved testing facilities are monitored, and would there be a difference in the product from if, you know, Vista has a, an approved testing, right? I mean, by our code, we can, we can have a testing facility in the city of Vista, correct?
Mr. Conley?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, Mr. Andrews, would there be a difference in terms of having a state-approved testing facility if it was in Vista or it's someplace else based on?
I, I don't believe so. The, the testing facilities that most manufacturers and cultivators use, there's, there's only a handful that, that are, that most use, and they are well, well-reputed. So those facilities would be, those testing facilities are, are responsible for the bulk of testing for many of the products that, that we would sell.
So where, the products that you get, where are they tested? Products that you get in your distribution center, who tests them? Where are they tested?
So the, the testing, they, the manufacturer and the cultivator will arrange with the testing facility to have a testing representative come on their site and do the testing in a controlled environment, and there's standards and regulations for that. But as for, as for when we receive the product, we would receive what's called a certificate of analysis certifying that that product had been tested, and we would be able to confirm with the testing lab at that time.
Will that be some sort of a state stamp that they agree with it, or that they have approved the testing facility?
Yes, that is all, that is all part of the, that is all part of what's called metric, which is the state's track and trace system. So anytime we accept a product, we list what vendor it came from, what testing facility it, it was approved from, and so forth. So there's a full accounting for the product throughout the chain of custody.
So if this, to have their own testing facility, it shouldn't make a difference because it's approved state testing facility? Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Conley, was there anyone else that wanted to speak during the public hearing?
There are no additional speakers noted, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Kramer, any, any comments or discussion?
My comments are all on the positive side, in that my career was in quality assurance and quality control of items, went to the Navy, that had to be free, mercury, certified as mercury-free. So we went through the same hoops that, that Mr. Andrews is doing, in that we would buy our components from manufacturers, and the manufacturer had to test their product and provide a certification to us that said the items contain no mercury, so that we could in turn put them into our, the items that we were manufacturing for the Navy and, and send them on much the same process. So I, I understand what Mr. Andrews is trying to do, and I'm in support of this project because it meets all of the criteria established by the city and by the state. I have nothing more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Hastings, any, any comments? It's muted? Your phone's muted?
Star nine.
Star nine? It's, it still says you're muted. Shall we go on to Commissioner Grimm, and, and we'll come back and check in with you? Commissioner Grimm, any comments? You're muted also, sir. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay. From the presentation, I think I would agree with Commissioner Kramer that it's, I think it's pretty well regulated, so I don't have any issues with the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Garrettson, any, any additional comments?
Yeah, I, I, I think the testing regulations, whether it's in Vista or San Marcos or San Diego, the testing regulations are going to be the same, and I don't know what, if anything, this is going to change in the use or distribution of marijuana, especially as it relates to Vista. So as much, whether I oppose use of marijuana or whether I...
Looks like you froze.
What was? Anyway, it looks like you're in compliance with, with the regulations, and no matter how much I may oppose marijuana, you know, based on what the voters vote for and what the city council has approved, I, I, I have to support this.
Understand. Thank you. Commissioner Looney, any comments?
Chairman, I have no comments or questions, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Aguilar, any comments?
Yeah, I guess I feel like Commissioner Garrettson, no matter how much I oppose marijuana in our city, as most of you know, I did oppose it, you know, when it was going to the voters. The voters did vote it in, and I do have to, excuse me, abide by the voters' wishes, and it sounds like they are meeting all the requirements, so it looks like I do have to support it.
Very good. I, I agree with Commissioner Garrettson and Commissioner Aguilar. I didn't support Proposition Z, but it's the law of the city now, and it appears that they have, the applicants, done everything that they're supposed to do, and it's a highly regulated industry now, so. So anyway, that concludes my comments. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I would move approval of this proposal, this special use permit as presented.
All right, very good. Commissioner Kramer?
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the special use permit. Any additional comments? I see none, so Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Place Chairman Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings? You want to raise your hand for a yes? Okay. Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Right, very good. So that's the last time we'll have to deal with that issue for a long time, I would imagine. All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda, it is an action item, it is not a public hearing, and so, but we will take public testimony if anyone who is online on the Zoom meeting wants to, wants to participate, so.
This is my item, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was looking for. Sorry, Mr. Conley.
All right. This is short but sweet, there are some street name changes that the staff has been evaluating for Ocean View and Faraday Streets. The Development Code section addresses public streets in Section 1904 and requires the city council authorize names of public streets following a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And a later section of that chapter authorizes the Planning Commission to approve street names for private streets, so we have a couple of private streets that we're clarifying or renaming, and a couple of public streets that we're doing the same and we're making a recommendation to the council for. The first is Ocean View. There are three streets in the Ocean View neighborhood, Ocean View Drive, which is the main road, it's a public street, and Ocean View Court and Ocean View Terrace, which are smaller private streets off the public street. There's been both one- and two-word conventions of the name Ocean View that have been approved for these various streets and interchanged throughout the years. So after reviewing the record, our staff is recommending to use a two-word convention of Ocean View for all three of these streets to remove any confusion. That would require the renaming of Ocean View Terrace, which was initially created as a one-named street, and the other two streets would be affirmed. The Planning Commission can recommend city council approval of Ocean View Drive as a public street and approve the Ocean View Court and Ocean View Terrace names as private streets. This is a map showing the location of these streets. I think most, most of you know Ocean View Drive is a public street that runs between Santa Fe and Civic Center, and Ocean View Court and Ocean View Terrace are smaller private streets on the south end of that public road. The other street name is Faraday. The street name in Vista is Faraday Street, which is a public street. The street extends into Carlsbad and is named Faraday Avenue, and so staff would like to rename the segment in Vista from Faraday Street to Faraday Avenue to be consistent with the street name to the west. The Planning Commission may recommend city council approval of Faraday Avenue as a public street, and this is the small section that runs between South Melrose Drive and the Carlsbad city boundary, where it changes to Faraday Avenue. Staff's recommending the Planning Commission recommend city council approval of the public street names for Ocean View Drive and Faraday Avenue, and that they approve the private street names for Ocean View Court and Ocean View Terrace, and that completes my staff presentation.
I, I don't know that I need to go through the roll and, and ask everybody if they have a comment. Anybody who has a comment, raise your hand. If not, can we hear a motion to approve the recommendation on the street name changes for Ocean View and Faraday? Commissioner Grimm?
Move staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I second the motion to approve P 20-0209 as stated.
Very good. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, to recommend of the city council that we would make the changes to these two street names, Ocean View and Faraday Drive Avenue, Faraday Avenue.
Thank you.
So, would you cast your, Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Place Chairman Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Raise your hand. Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
All right, very good. Next item on our agenda, reports and comments from the commissioners. Any comments, commissioners, for, or questions of staff? If not, we'll move along to Mr. Conley's report.
I don't have too much to report tonight. We will not have a meeting on September 20, what is it, the 20, no.
October 6.
So the next meeting would be October 6, and that, we will not be having a meeting on that date. The meeting after... The meeting after that, October twentieth, is a possibility, and so I'll be advising the commission via email if that meeting is going to be scheduled. As far as development updates, we are fairly close to giving occupancy on one hundred Main Street. They're just finishing up their public improvements. You can see the walkway and some of the improvements that have been put in there, and they're going to be asking for occupancy around the end of the month. The Perseid Development on North Santa Fe is getting occupancy of its first building probably in October as well. And the two projects on Santa Fe, the Perseid Artist Village, you can see is starting to go up, and the one across the street, the Terrace Lofts, is supposed to start construction this month as well. And the last one is on Civic Center, the senior affordable project that's across from the Vaughn Center, is getting close to occupancy, and we expect that to happen in October as well. So that's kind of an update of active projects, unless the commission has any questions. That's pretty much where we stand.
Any additional questions? All right, very good. Then we will stand adjourned tonight, and Mr. Conley will let us know whether we're going to meet on October twentieth or not.
Thank you.
So good to see you all. Thanks for participating. Commissioner Hastings, we'll work on your microphone there, and we'll see you folks next month. Thanks a lot.